Are present, and we also have Town Planner Jean Bubon here. We'll approve the minutes of the meeting as the first item on the agenda. After that, we have an approval not required from Silvertree Realty on property along Route 15. At 6:35, we'll have a continued discussion on the possible zoning amendments to Chapter 14 and Chapter 15 of the zoning bylaw. Following that, we'll have the town planner update, and then old and new business, and then adjournment. So has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of June 25?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, additions, changes? If not, I'll take a motion to accept as submitted.
So moved.
So moved. Sue, and Jim second. All in favor? Okay, very good. So next, we have the A and R for Silvertree Realty. Jean, you want to go over that?
Yes. So you actually have two plans in your packet. One is a plan, a copy of a plan that was previously endorsed by the board, and you'll note that there were five lots in the remaining land. So the plan before you this evening is actually taking away lots one, two, and three, and just leaving lots four and five in the remaining land. So the plan meets the requirements, so I would recommend that you endorse the plan as submitted.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the A and R?
So moved.
Second. Jim, all in favor? And we have a party assign?
Yep.
And there's a marker over there.
Retires.
I know. We get very casual.
That's going to sound good on TV. That's going to sound good. Yes.
Sorry.
Set. Very good. Okay. Next item is a continued discussion on the possible zoning amendments, Chapter 14 and 15 of the zoning bylaw. Jean?
Yes. So I've put in the final, what I believe to be the final edits anyway, from our last meeting, and there's just a few, so I'll go through them one at a time. On the first page, on Chapter 14, Section 1401, permitted uses, subparagraph D, I cleaned up that sentence a little bit, and if everyone's comfortable with that, I'll change it in the rest of the chapters. And so the issue there was, it said, walking, hiking, bicycling, roller skating, picnicking, cross-country skiing, snow shoeing, through establishment of trails. So I changed it to be through the establishment of trails and other amenities. I think that was consistent with what we spoke about.
That's good.
Okay. So that's all on that page. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Subparagraph F, the farm, it was questioned if this was still the correct definition because it only talked about wine and dairy and not brewer, brewery products, excuse me, beer. And yes, this language is consistent, so we should leave that alone. And then on the next page, we had talked about adding distillery, microbrewery, and winery. And the microbrewery, I would recommend leaving because we have specific definitions for that. When it came to distillery and winery, oh, and cidery, we spoke about at the last meeting, it gets a little more confusing with the licenses. I gave you some information from the ABCC for you to look at, and you can see, it gets a little confusing, and they talk about a cidery can be, it would be the same license as a winery, a farmer's winery. And then also today, though, when I was perusing the state website for legislation pending, there's actually legislation pending, or a bill that's pending, that would actually define a cidery and have a separate license for that. So I also gave you just a couple of examples from other towns, and I think it might have been Medway, who I think is probably the smartest in all of this, and they're calling it a craft.
Craft beverage business and tasting room.
Beverage business and tasting room. And I think that is probably the smartest, in that I would now propose eliminating the definition that I created for distillery and winery, leaving microbrewery and inserting, this is the definition, I modified it a little bit. So I'll read this, and you can let me know if you have any concerns with this. So I did craft beverage business with tasting room. A facility licensed under the relevant state and federal statutes for the production and distribution of malt, spiritus, or vinous beverages, excuse me. Such establishment may include onsite sampling, the sale of permitted beverages produced on the premises to consumers for off-site consumption, and the sale of commercial goods branded by the establishment. A tasting room not to exceed 25% of the building's gross square footage that allows patrons to sample or consume beverages that are produced on premises is permitted as an accessory use. The establishment may also host marketing events, special events, and/or factory tours, may include facilities for customers to brew on premise for personal consumption off-site as an accessory use. And I added that because there, I found such a facility in Worcester where you can actually make your own wine and make your own beer, and then you go back and pick it up later, and I thought that might be something nice that they might want to add. So I don't know if you have any concerns with the direction that I took this, but I just thought saying relevant state and federal statutes because...
Yes, I think it's good.
Very well.
Then if something changes, we're still covered.
Is there a reason why we're keeping it at 20, or the suggestion is 25%?
For the tasting room? No.
I'm just wondering, I'm trying to picture Rapschallian and...
Yeah, that's...
It's probably between the two rooms. It's probably more than 25.
Probably 50. They're probably almost 50%, I would say. And no.
It's not overwhelming, neither.
No, it's not overwhelming, and I really have no concern with going up. I wanted to use something as a starting point.
Now, is the tasting room different from, say, just like a retail sales section? Because Rapschallian, also, that part of there also has regular...
Right, they have the regular retail scale. So that would, that could be separate, or it could be combined, so you, it could be a tasting room where they're selling everything right there.
Yeah. You'd think maybe a tasting room would be more, you know, well, a place maybe where they're selling, like, the bottle stuff, like, if you go, there's a winery down, you know, at the Cape where you can buy the bottles, but then you also have the tasting area.
Right.
But they don't really sell it by the glass. Well, maybe they do.
Right.
I think they actually, I don't know if they sell it, or you have to, you know, go for like a tasting tour or something. I forget exactly.
Right, like a little shot glass.
With this, they could give the samples or sell it by the glass. I'm thinking of Hardwick Winery.
Yeah.
You can do sampling, but you can also have it by the glass.
Buy it by the glass.
And the same with the new winery in Brimfield. So you can do sampling, or buy it by the glass, or buy a bottle. So maybe 25% is too low. I mean, I'm certainly not intending to stifle, you know, how many people, you know, could be in there. I just wanted to give a starting point for discussion.
Would it be our understanding then that the tasting room, you know, encompasses anyplace where you're selling it by the glass? Is that what the idea is?
Yes. Yeah.
So maybe it should be bigger.
Question about that. Did somewhere in here you say that it would be for making beer and winery from product grown on the premises?
That's a farmer's brew, and that's the definition that we have for farmer's brewery.
Because I couldn't imagine any place under our current special use district that might be large enough to do their own growing.
No, I'm technically, under the state statute, they say two acres is the minimum size for a small farm, but I agree with you, it would be very difficult if you were trying to grow enough hops to produce your own. It would be extremely difficult. But if you notice with the winery, and this was all the differences in the state alcohol licenses as well, because when it talked about a brewery, it talked about growing your own product and supplementing that with others. But if you looked at the winery, you could bring all of your grapes in from someplace else. You didn't necessarily have to grow them.
Yep.
And then the same with a distillery, they had to produce some of the product, so, but yet you could get a commercial producer's license. So there were so many variations, that's why I kind of steered in the direction that I went.
I know in Plymouth, there was a place that sells wines, and the grapes are grown all over Cape Cod, and they have tastings, like, you get three of them for a dollar and a half or something like that, but then they only sell the bottles there, they don't produce it there.
Right. Well, I think that the idea, I mean, if we're looking at this as an area where we'd like to encourage kind of entertainment uses, things that people can do in the evening, you would expect that they would be selling by the glass as well as doing the sampling and maybe even the tours. So, you know, maybe 50% is more appropriate, because you're right, I'm thinking Rapschallian is not overwhelming, it's a pretty small area there.
That sounds good. Everyone agree?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree with 50%. The only thing that I wonder is, knowing that we have the brewery definition, if this, there's some sort of conflict between the way someone might interpret this and the way someone might interpret brewery and then be confused by the word craft beverage being encompassing of breweries?
I think, right, you could read that both ways. So either we exclude the brewery from this and leave the microbrewery that we have. We just did the definitions last year on the microbrewery and the brew pub. So you could say craft beverage business with tasting room not to include microbrewery and leave, because the definitions that we have for microbrewery apply in other districts as well, so I'd be concerned about taking that out. Let me just...
So maybe we just add that to the language, just saying, so that people are, if they were reading this, would know what to refer to if they were thinking about opening a brewery.
Right. So we have the microbrewery, and we break it up between the rural residential or in the commercial districts. And then we have, I think we have brew pub maybe? No, I thought we had a brew pub, but we had microbrewery, and the definition of that is, within the rural residential district, this shall mean an establishment operating under a farmer brewery license as provided for in Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 19(c), not to exceed 5,000 barrels annually. Such use shall only be permitted on parcels containing a minimum of 20 acres. Within any commercial district where such use is permitted, a microbrewery shall be defined as a facility that prepares handcrafted beer intended for retail and/or on premise tasting and consumption. So I think maybe we exclude and leave this definition for the brewery.
Yeah, or, I mean, do you think it's really that much of a conflict, I mean, all we really say is the distribution of malt, spiritus, or vinous, venus. So it really, I don't think it really conflicts that much. I mean, it goes back, I think it's good to leave what we have in for the brewery already because it's well-defined and it's well-thought-out, so, I mean, I don't think it really is that much of a conflict, really.
Well, I'm just thinking, if I were, if I were reading the zoning and I was going to open up a brewery, I might go out, like, if, I would just think I might be able to fall under this definition, the way it's written, particularly stating the distribution of malt, which is predominantly for beer production, and is also a craft beverage. So I'm just trying to make sure it's clear for whoever's lying for, based on the zoning, to know exactly what they're submitting for.
I think the only other way to look at it is that, under the permitted uses, it will say microbrewery, and then under that, craft beverage business with tasting room.
Yep.
So I think...
That works as well.
I know that works.
Absolutely.
And then I think that, you know, we might want to look at some of the other districts, and why not have a craft beverage business with tasting room, say, in commercial tourist district? Because we allow for the microbreweries, but we don't really have, well, we have specialty beverage, but maybe at some point we want to add that as well.
All right, I think that works out well.
Okay. All right, so I'll change that to 50%. So that was all I had in Chapter 14, so unless I missed anything, I believe that I have everybody's edits and comments taken into consideration.
There's one, one I had inquired about the language regarding trails. We had used the word trails.
Right.
But what does that mean when it says trails? Define trails, you know? Are we talking about the trail system we have in town? You know, that we develop with the trails committee?
Or it could be...
Or are we talking about a pathway that you walk?
It could be a trail that somebody creates on their property. That's, that's, I thought that I had cleaned that up when adding through the establishment of trails and other amenities in D. I thought I was addressing your concern there. If I'm not, then please let me know, and we'll see if we can address it.
I mean, you know, the trail system we currently have is mostly in, like, rural residential.
Right.
So it isn't really conflicting with any of this. I think all we're trying to do with this is to, you know, say that if we are going to have something that's a commercial, you know...
Undertaking.
Undertaking of, you know, amusement or entertainment, that you could establish some kind of a trail. And I think by saying trails and other amenities leads it broad enough to say that whatever they come in with, you can see whether or not it fits into that.
All right. I just wanted to talk about it and see what others thought of it.
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted to ask about, I know it's a little late, but I was wondering, under permitted uses in the special use district, we don't have assisted, in town, we don't have any assisted living or elder apartments?
Mm-hmm.
And, and isn't a hotel and a motel also able to go in that area?
No. No.
No to hotel motel?
No to hotel motel. We have a mobile retirement community, hospital or medical treatment building, bed and breakfast. That's about...
Right.
All for, and then single, two-family, and multifamily dwellings.
It just made me, in reviewing it all, it brought that to light, and I didn't know if that could be added tonight with the board's approval.
Well, what do we have in there for medical facilities? How does that define, say?
Offices.
Is medical treatment, don't they?
Treatment, I think, is the, a building that contains establishments dispensing health services.
Would an assistant, assisted living fall into that, or?
No, I'm...
No, I think that...
Or elder apartments, you know?
Well, you can do housing for the, not in this district, right, in the rural ones.
Correct.
So I think if we added assisted living, we should create a definition specifically for assisted living.
Or just put elder apartments?
Elder apartments is not necessarily an assisted living, though.
Correct. I put and/or, I wanted to just have a little discussion.
I mean, we do allow housing types, so I don't...
Now, we got specific about some of them.
Right. We, yeah, single-family, two-family, the mobile...
Mobile retirement.
Right, that was in our existing bylaw. I don't have a concern with adding any other housing types because we have them in there, but I don't know how the board feels.
Any thoughts on that?
I don't have a problem with it.
I thought one of the things we were trying to do was, you know, orient this thing toward, you know, the entertainment and recreational type thing to support the areas.
But then we shouldn't put a lot of this stuff in there, then.
Well, they're already in there, though.
They're already there.
They're already currently allowed uses. I mean, these other...
And it could be changed, like we're changing 15, right?
Right. But I guess the idea is, I mean, does it add that much to say, in addition to the other housing things, assisted living? I guess that's, that's all. Why would an assisted living, you know, be, you know, good down there versus anywhere else in town where it is allowed?
Say elder apartments, if we're putting mobile retirement community in there?
Well, I mean, part of that is, there's one...
There's one existing, so we can take it out.
It exists.
Right. You wouldn't want to delete it because it exists, right?
And we have some existing holes there, too, so we want to make sure.
No, no bed and breakfast. You know what I'm, it's just something, a need in our community that we need to look at, and I just...
I definitely think it's...
It doesn't have to be assisted living, that's more involved, you know? And elder apartments, they have, would have access to the activities that would be happening on 15. Just because you're in an elder apartment doesn't mean you're incapable.
But I mean, even on these elder apartment things, in other words, when we had all that influx of 55 and over housing, and now nobody seems to be doing them anymore, I mean...
Right.
So is there really a definition and a need for an elder, elder housing period is a special thing? I mean...
Yeah, a lot of communities are building them.
Blue and gold isn't being built, even though they have all the permits for it.
Right. I think that assisted living, I think it's probably valid to look at zoning for assisted living and different housing types, but maybe we consider that as something to add later. We're starting our housing plan kickoff tomorrow night, and, but I'm saying not just in this one zone, maybe it needs to go in multiple zones.
I don't know how you define elder housing, I mean, without having like a 55 restriction.
Putting an age on it, yeah.
No, you don't, and, you know, multifamily dwellings are already allowed in that district, so they could have multifamily, and it could be for, you know...
It would be their choice if they want to do it.
It would be their choice if they want to do it 55 and over. So I think that's already there. I think the ability to do 55 and over is already there. I think it's just the assisted living is something that you would have to consider if you wanted to add to this district.
Do we have a definition for assisted living?
No, I would have to draft one.
But we'd need one, then, also for what do we mean by a bed and breakfast and a hospital or medical treatment, right?
We already have a bed and breakfast.
Definition?
Yeah, bed and breakfast was already in here, I didn't add that. That was in here, and a bed and breakfast is a dwelling in which the primary resident provides overnight accommodations and meals for no more than four rooms for compensation. So I think that gives people the opportunity that maybe live in that district to provide, you know, bed and breakfast. We allow, that's allowed in almost every zone in town. I'm not sure we have any in town, bed and breakfast, but it is, that was added in 1992. I'm not sure how many we have.
Uh-huh. Airbnb, maybe.
Oh, maybe.
Maybe we should do that.
Maybe.
But that, if we're going through this and updating it, and updating the concepts within the bylaw, we should, we should do so now.
Well, as far as the elderly housing, in other words, we do have that allowed in here because it's multifamily in there.
Right, multifamilies in there.
And so somebody could come in and make it age restricted if they wanted to.
Right.
So that's all set. So the only question really becomes the assisted living, and since we don't have a definition for assisted living anywhere, maybe we should add it later on rather than put it in now and add it in. I don't know if this is something we need to do now or not. It's up to the board, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I'm wondering if it makes sense to Jean's point to look at the housing plan, because I know, like, there is going to be a huge demand for assisted living coming up, whether it's folks who are, live in town, that want to continue living in town to be part of the community, or caregivers, children of parents who are going into assisted living, wanting their, their family members close by. So I think it's something that we definitely need to address as a town, and I agree with Sue, like, let's take advantage of it. That being said, I'm conflicted because we were charged with a thing really directing the zoning in this area to recreation, but I do think it's something we should address, knowing that this isn't going to go till town meeting, you know, almost a year from now. I think we probably have some time to keep this on the table.
Right.
Does that make sense, or? That would be my recommendation.
See what the definition is. Let's see what the definition is first, and before we include it.
And potentially see where else in town...
One of the other things I need to consider about this whole area here is that, you know, it isn't really that big an area, you know? That's really the problem we had before with our planned unit business development thing, where we had these great ideas of all these different things you could have with, with, you know, places to work and places to live, places to shop, places to be entertained, and it just wasn't enough space for it. So, I mean, I'm not against it, certainly, but I mean, I think we've done a good job, but Jean has done a good job in trying to meet what we needed, you know, to do to update this thing for, you know, what the board of selectmen had said, the primary direction really should be toward entertainment and supporting the area of the businesses of the town.
I want to make it clear, I know Jean has done a great job, it's just that as we go through this, we do have acreage, and how much acreage is available?
Not very much. I'd have to go back to one of my prior memos.
You can just have your ballpark, because...
That's not available, though. No, I gave them a breakdown with taking out the constraints. Yeah. So we have suitable parcels include, Six River Road has 2.36 acres, Nine River Road has 20.78, 140 Route 15 has 4.48 acres, and that was it. When we started this process, Yogi Bear Jellystone Park hadn't been under redevelopment. That was 76 acres, and I think we were really looking at that, and One River Road hadn't really been redeveloped. So if we look at what's there, there's two, 23, 27 acres total on various sites that aren't necessarily contingent, contiguous, excuse me. So I think that's my only hesitation with the assisted living. I absolutely believe we need assisted living in town, but that's my hesitation, is that there's not a lot of acreage left, and also, we have no utility, so I think it would be extremely costly to develop the size of an assisted living that you would actually be able to fit on one of those parcels and have your own onsite wastewater and well. I think that would be my only hesitation, and I think we should take a more holistic view of the town, and maybe that's something, I mean, it still is rather slow in permitting. I mean, that's something we could start looking at next as we go through this housing plan process that we kick off tomorrow night, too.
Yeah, one of the primary areas that were being considered for that sort of a facility, and even, you know, medically oriented, was behind Brogan's, all that land up there.
Right.
Because, again, that didn't, you know, go through with that really, so...
Right. And that was in the master plan, actually, to look at that as an area for that, too.
It's just healthy discussion, wanted to put it on the table.
Great discussion.
So we'll move forward as we have it pretty much now, then?
Fine.
Good. Okay, great. Very good. Is there any action we need to take at this time, or?
I'm not done yet, and then you can take some action.
That's right. Chapter 15, part of it, right.
So then, Chapter 19, the intensity regulations that go along with this. I also made the changes that were requested at the last meeting. So you'll see that we reduced the, under special use, the last column, the last row on the table, reduced the front setback to 50 feet, and then the maximum lot coverage included a footnote that it's 30%, but it could be varied by special permit. The maximum height, the same thing, 35 feet, but it can be varied by special permit, and then again, the same with the impervious surface. So I think the board was looking to provide flexibility to people that may want to develop in that quarter, and I think by doing that, it allows you to look at these on a case-by-case basis and grant relief. Now I'm done.
Great.
And if you are satisfied with the edits, then I would ask that you vote to be the petitioner of the changes. However, I would hold off on... However, I would hold off on sending this to the board of selectmen because, as you know, you have to hold the public hearing within six months of a town meeting. And because we don't know yet when a town meeting is coming, I think I would maybe wait. Do we know when we might? Not yet. So I'd maybe hold off.
You mean to say at the next town, in time for the next town meeting, something like that?
Right.
Don't we normally wait till the annual for this stuff?
Normally, we would wait until the annual, although we did solar at a special. I think there's been a couple of times when we've done a couple of things at, at a special. I think that would be up to the board, what you want to do. I mean, personally, I think that this is an area that's been, you know, kind of sitting, wanting some change for a very long time, and I don't know.
I mean, really, I think a lot of it is that, you know, we're, we're really redefining and refocusing some of the uses that were already there. I mean, the problem we had before with the planned unit business development, it had such a unique, you know, requirements with space and everything else. I don't think it would be a real, you know, conflict if the board decided to try to move this forward at the, at a special town meeting.
My concern would be if somebody brought up at the special that, you know, exactly what I said, and it gets voted down, then we can't bring it up for.
No, you can bring it at any time. If the planning board supports the article, then it can come back at any time. If a planning board doesn't support an article, there's a two-year wait unless it's substantially changed.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion then to become the sponsor of this and put it forward in time for the next scheduled special town meeting.
So that means I'll hold on sending it to the board of selectmen until I have an idea of when a meeting is coming? Because then they only have 14 days to pass it back for hearing.
Makes sense? Everyone happy with that? Okay. Want to make a motion? Somebody?
Some moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Very good.
Okay.
Okay, town planner update?
So you have the Pilot Travel Quarterly Report in your packet. There was some trash issues, and it looks like they are trying to address that. The other thing I did is I asked them to kind of keep an eye on the queuing on the street. So there was a point a couple of weeks ago where there were about 12 trailer trucks parked out on the street, and I think maybe the lot was full. They were supposed to be letting people know when the lot was full, but I think, you know, the other truck stop in town is closed now, too, so I don't know if that's kind of taking away options for people, but I just wanted to keep an eye on that.
Can we require them to have more, no parking signs along there? Because there is no parking on the state highway.
Is that still considered a state highway?
Of course it is.
I think there was a sign out there, no parking.
But it's really, it's.
Because it's hard to enforce, because if they don't know it's not a state highway.
Right.
You know what I mean? I mean, we know it's not, we know it's a state highway, but truck drivers coming from all over the country don't know it's a state highway.
It's not marked as such, I don't think.
But isn't the issue the fact that they're waiting to get in and they're just all on the road?
Can we get more no parking signs along the road?
Yeah, but I think they're staying on the road because they are not having the opportunity to get in, or maybe they're leaving their, the police department got a complaint, and I think it was that people were leaving their trucks on the street and going maybe to the convenience store or to take a shower because they couldn't get in.
That'd be pretty bad.
But you know, those trucks are parked there all day.
I went by the other day, and there were three or four, you know, trucks waiting to get in. Now, there was some construction going on down further. I don't know if that had an impact on it. But, I mean, you know, it's certainly not good to have them out on the road like that.
No.
If they're actually parking there and then going and using the facilities, I would think that's a real violation. So what would the police do in that case?
On, down on 15?
Yeah, they're all night. They're lined up all over the neighborhood.
Yep.
And they hang out in the street? There were, I drove down there, sorry to interrupt, there's a guy laying on the shoulder with a flashlight reading books.
Really?
Well, I guess it's not approved. So I guess we need to get some kind of enforcement going, huh?
You might be to park yourself, not your vehicle.
I'll talk to Chief Ford again about it.
Yeah, I think we need to find out what the, you know, I'm sure Jeff would know. It's really not a good situation. I thought it was bad enough with three or four trucks, you know, floating. I can't imagine them out there hanging out all night. It's pretty bad.
When I got, yeah, when I got the complaint the last time, they said there were 12 trucks they had counted out there.
Didn't they used to come in once a year?
No, they used to come in every three years, but then the last time that we did a three-year hearing, the board went to this quarterly reporting instead, because they were coming up from Tennessee and basically coming to a meeting and saying, well, pick up your trash, don't let them park out there. So I think it was then that you changed it.
It sounds like the "don't let them pack out there" is becoming a much bigger issue.
Right. I'll try to follow up with the chief and with the, there's a manager, new manager to Pilot that I spoke to the other week about another issue. So, all right. And then you'll see you have a certificate from Thompson Liston Associates. And I went out to do a final inspection of the Heel property, and I went out with Thomas Chamberland, the tree warden, prior to his retirement, and we found everything to be in good order. There was one tree that really wasn't right in their vicinity where they built, but it appeared to be dead, and we thought maybe it could pose a risk, so we asked them to contact the owner and see if they could take care of that. But all of the improvements that they were charged with doing under their special permit had been met. The site was in good order and actually came out quite nice, and the building inside is very nice as well.
Any opening day?
No, they need to get product. So they said they are still working to get their grow facility up and running in Warren, and from the time they get up and running, it will take five months to get their first harvest. They've applied for a waiver with the state to see if they can buy from a wholesaler, because the, kind of the difference in the regulations is if you're a medical marijuana facility, you have to grow your own product. It's, you know, it has to be vertically integrated. If you are an adult-use marijuana facility, you can buy from a wholesaler, you don't have to grow your own. So it's kind of two differing sets of regulations now. And now that it's coming all under the Cannabis Control Commission, instead of the DPH and the CCC, I think we'll see some changes in the regulation as time goes along. So in the meantime, they've applied for a waiver, but I haven't heard back.
Do you know how, what the status of their grow facility in Warren is? I mean, is it, is it under construction?
It's under construction. They hit a lot more in the way of structural issues that had to be done to create the facility, so. That is?
All right.
All right. And then the only other thing I have is I was waiting for a new board member to be appointed, but my concern is that the registry will start rejecting our plans. So I think I'd like you to sign the registry sheet this evening, and then when we get a new member, we'll just do it again.
Okay.
And, because normally we would do it when we reorganize, but we didn't reorganize that long ago anyway, so I'm assuming we'll probably stay the same for a while. So if I could just pass this along and you could mark, sign it, and if you know your terms, mark them. Otherwise, I'll ask Janay to do that, and then we'll send that in. And then our next meeting is August 13th. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I missed something. So 179 Main Street, where Julie Gere's Fitness used to be, there is a new person starting up. She'll be doing, like, dance and fitness classes there, and she'll be able to have as many as 20 people, would be her maximum at a time with two instructors. So, nice to see that space filled at 179. And then our next meeting is August 13th. The week of, that week actually, August 12th, our office will be closed most of the week because we're doing permit software training that week. However, there are two days where we are doing half-days, and we will certainly be in the building. So if anyone needs anything, they could leave a message with somebody else and we'll get back to them. But all of the land use staff will be affected that week with needing to take the training. So I just want to announce that at as many meetings as we can, and we'll put it on the website as well. And then tomorrow night is our kickoff on our housing plan. We'll be working with CMRPC. That meeting is at Town Hall at 5:30 tomorrow evening, and anybody is welcome to attend.
Very good. Okay. Old business? Rust, do you have any old business? Jim?
No business.
No.
Old business? Okay. New business? Jim?
I'd like the board to think about, for a future meeting, the problems that some of the towns are having in the state with dumping. Very smelly, there seems to be no consistent regulation that can be built adjacent to existing homes. We even had a problem in town perhaps three or four years ago. What's the road that runs up alongside Sabre's Bank?
Wallace.
Yeah.
Wallace.
Wallace.
It's on Wallace. Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Someone there was dumping, and all of the neighbors were complaining. This is three or four years ago, and the problem has been resolved, but there's cases going on in Worcester now in trial court, and I would hate to think that we would get into that same situation, and I just suggest that the board think about what we might do in a preventive mode.
Wouldn't that fall under the board of health?
Yes.
Now, what are they dumping? I mean.
Yeah.
Trash?
Trash?
What are they dumping?
Animal bodies and frozen food and that kind of thing, and it's immediately adjacent to homes, and it creates a significant odor problem. One of the cases in Worcester right now that's undergoing, the fellow is just coming off a five-year suspended sentence, and they've already got him going a second time.
So maybe that would be board health, yes, Jeff?
Question, is this homeowners who are dumping their own?
No. This is people who own land that claim that they are doing it to build up soil. But what they are putting in there is questionable at best, and.
Is it, who's doing it? Is it the landlord?
The person who owns the land, I can give you his name if you want, I don't know.
No, you can talk to me offline about that, but I'm just.
Okay. There's two particular towns in the state that have gone through particular problems, Northborough and Uxbridge. And I would simply hate to see us fall into that trap that these other towns have fallen into, simply because they didn't have any regulations prohibiting what could be done for disposing of, I don't know whether you want to call it trash, foodstuffs, whatever you want to call it, it's stuff that's left to rot, supposedly to build up the land.
Like compost?
Supposedly, they're, they're doing it to make composting, but they're putting in animals, they're putting in leftover food from many sources, and it just rots, and it's right next to existing homes.
Well, we can certainly look into it. Maybe Rust's idea that might have something to do with the board of health more than us.
I would think that would fall under the board of health.
We certainly don't allow that, you know, in our zoning bylaws at all.
I mean, I understand where you're coming from, Jim, but I don't know if that falls under our jurisdiction.
Well, I don't know either, but I'm not saying that it certainly is, but I think that I'd like to see the town address the issue beforehand rather than after the catus of the day.
Good thing Jeff's here tonight. That's good. Maybe we can talk to him about it. Great. Very good.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
There seems to be a lot of collection boxes around town. Again, every once in a while that people have to be reminded, and I'm not sure who is responsible for that.
Well, the issue is, remember, we tried to pass a bylaw that would regulate them, and it failed at town meeting? So basically, there's nothing to prohibit them. The ones that have come, that I've had come before us are because they've put them in parking spaces, which is contrary to their site plan. But if they're not placing them in a parking space or anything in violation of that site plan, then there's little we can do to curb that. I've talked with the building inspector about this at length, yeah.
Who follows up on that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah.
Okay, good.
We are getting quite a few more.
Yes.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mike, Chris, anything else?
I don't have anything, no.
All set?
All set.
Very good. All right. Motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
All in favor? Very good.
I'm sorry, who's seconded? I forgot I'm taking minutes. Jim, okay, thank you.